Good morning. I want to take a few minutes of your time. Just want to take this time to introduce Grayson Low or Petrie. Grayson is a new, I had one in my head from he is a new hire. Grayson comes to us from West Branch where he was born and raised. You might know the last name. His dad is the superintendent for Core Intermediate School District. Grayson graduated from Kirtland Regional Police Academy in May of 2023 and worked a very short time at the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office. And we were fortunate enough, unfortunate for them, due to some financial issues, they had to lay Grayson off and we were quick to jump on that and bring him on board with us. Like I've told you before, we were five down for the whole year of 2023. We're four down now. Grayson's been with us for two months now and is just wrapping up Phase One of his field training program and will be entering into Phase Two here beginning in February. So we just want to introduce Grayson to everybody. And if you guys have any questions for him, I'm sure he'll be more than happy to answer. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I think it's really great that we're getting some new people on board, especially during these, I mean, to be a police officer today, I can't imagine what goes through your mind with everything that's been going on, the conflict between police officers. So we got to certainly give the officer a lot of credit for coming on board.
One thing that I didn't mention about Grayson is he is a graduate of the early middle college through Core, which is 13 years of high school. And he graduates with an associate's degree out of the academy. Program that Core started five, six years ago through the local schools. He attended the criminal justice program at the Roscommon Schools for your 12th year, 12th year of high school, and then went right into the police academy after that. So a success story for Core. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Ken Borton, letter of support for Senate Bill 662, Commissioner Wolfson.
Yes. Here a couple of meetings back, our administrator in her report had mentioned about this bill and it's supposed to be designed to allow some bonding once the assessment district's been set and also maybe offering some latitude for weather events on our lakes. It is beyond our control, temporary ones, it says. Well, I drafted this letter, I'm going to email out to Ken Morton and also Senator Cortenga. And I'm going to attach my name to it. Any other board member that would like their name attached to it, I will do so. Just let me know.
Is there any questions or discussion for Commissioner Wolfson?
Yeah, I we certainly knew something was going on on board with the new law that was made in our Court of Appeals due to the Citizens for Higgins Lake Legal Levels, a case against the county. It's unfortunate I had to get to that at that point. I don't want my name attached to this because the final bill, there is no final bill yet. This is all in markup right now. This is all preliminary stages of the bill. And I have no idea what the final version is going to be. And I don't think anybody here does either. So I would, I would, I would like to, or I adventure to hold off in sending any letter of support until we see a final version of the bill. That's my comments.
Yeah, it's reasonable. We wait a couple of weeks in my recommendation, but I think we should be supportive of the resolution, the, of the, any of what he's trying to accomplish. Whether we need to send a letter at this point, maybe premature.
I like the concept, I'm sorry.
I certainly appreciate the concept and I appreciate the fact that he's working toward a goal. So should we wait? I'll let you decide how you do that, Rex. But if you want to wait a couple of weeks, I think I can get on board.
Yeah, that's fine. We can wait because I don't think it's, you know, moved very far forward yet.
And I appreciate the concept also, especially on the bonding issue for getting something going as far as bonding, establishing legal levels. It looks like the weather, the weather issue is a bit of common sense and kind of like a get out of jail free card. That's what I looked at it as for, for, for that part of the legislation. But, you know, let's wait. I'm, I'd like to wait a little bit of time also until we see a final version of the bill.
I, I don't see it as a get out of jail free card. I see it as common sense, like you said, only in black and white.
I appreciate your initiative, but I'd wait a week. Again, I don't think there's any real hurry, but if there is, let me know and we'll see if we can speed it up.
I'll just wait a couple of weeks on it then.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is the Building Security Policy Committee of the Whole. We all were given an updated on the policy. I know that we've had a lot of questions back and forth. Our Controller Jody, she's been very good at helping us get those answers and things like that. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Yes.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I feel uncomfortable of the county commissioners being able to go through, not going through security. You know, we're the leaders of the county. Just that example. If the majority of the people in the audience have to go through the security, I think it's the commissioner to do that also. I know there's been some discussion about coming. I personally do my, my business, like I just District Health tonight with, with Chairman and we had Northwest Community Action Agency up in Travis City the other day. I had Mission Agency, but most of the stuff that I do is out of, out of, out of the business, out of the building. I just feel that the county commissioner shouldn't be exempted. Julie's got to go through security, I think I should too. Just my thoughts.
I agree 100%. Like anybody coming into the building should have to go through security. It's your, you're only as strong as your weakest link. And if there's exceptions, then who's going to be the exception? And who allows for those exceptions to be made?
Well, and if I could, I don't have a problem with some exemptions. The kicker is though I just think the county commissioner should adhere to the policy that the, that the, that the regular employees have to adhere to. My thoughts. And I will, and I, if it passes, I know it's been vetted. I just feel very strongly about this. Thank you.
Ma'am, sure. I'm good with the policy as presented. I just, I strongly believe we can't have a policy in place that prevents government from happening. And there are people in government that don't work regular hours. There are people that come into the office beyond regular hours, get the job done.
Right, I understand there's provisions for that. They just have to go to the Sheriff's Department to get in.
Cool. And this, this addresses that, so I'm good with the policy.
Any other discussion? If we're all in agreement with the changes, then I would like at our, the meeting following this to add a motion in, seeing as it's kind of a time sensitive thing to implement this policy.
In two weeks or this next?
This next meeting. At 10 o'clock.
At this, this meeting at 10 o'clock.
Yep, because to me it would be an emergency meeting. The rest of the building has went into effect as of January 1st. And we've been holding off, you know, talking about this. And I think that it would be appropriate to do at this next meeting.
I agree. We're seeing 10 o'clock today.
Yes.
I don't think it's an emergency, but I have no problem with having it at 10 o'clock today.
We should have actually moved on this a couple of months ago, in my opinion. The bottom line is the Sheriff's Department that has control of the building security, not the commissioners. I will vote no on this, this motion because I feel the county commissioner should not be exempt. Thank you.
Can we amend that before the meeting?
What?
I would, I would agree with Mark. I'll vote no on it also unless the county commissioners are not exempt also.
Well, we, we've talked about this off and on for several meetings now. And this is the way it's been presented by the sheriff to us and the judge. And we're just looking for, they're looking for our approval as they presented it.
I voiced my opinion on this issue many, many times. So it's not like this is the first time that I brought this up. If the board doesn't want to accept my recommendation, I'm fine with that. Bottom line, I'm voting no because I feel that the commissioner should not be exempt.
Any other discussion? Pressers Quarterly Report, Rebecca Riegen.
Morning. Good morning. Another quarter down. Does anybody have any questions? We'll just go through it really quick. First page being my spreadsheet. And then the filing pages are out of the general ledger showing that the banks and the general ledger are balanced to the penny. You'll notice interest coming in quite strongly. MBIA is giving 5.4 right now in interest. So there is no need, you'll see the CDs are actually down and more money in MBIA because CDs are actually giving less and the only, the CDs that give approximately the same as what MBIA is giving are only a month to six weeks. So they're not doing long-term CDs for high interest rates. Also, I want to talk a little bit about our PRE program. It's on the agenda for resolution. And I appreciate if you guys vote on that again because it gives us locally control over auditing the PREs. Downstate at Lansing, they don't know the people. They'll just deny people willy-nilly. And we have an opportunity to go and visit those homes and get questionnaires and have those people come in with their documentation, which is much nicer than having to send it down to Lansing and talk to somebody who isn't local. So I'd appreciate it if you all pass that resolution. Our PRE program averages about 53 denials a year. Right now, we have four cases before the tribunal. The last two, we've won. Also, Loretta is currently working on 18 new cases. So the state calls us and asks us for our audit spreadsheet and they have been very happy with Loretta. She does a fantastic job. This is her niche. I mean, she can investigate and talk to the people and she's very organized and she's very great. That's, that's all I have unless.
I was to say when we brought her on and the money she was making for the county. I'll continue to support.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That program.
She does a great job.
Yes, she does.
I saw one of the banks yesterday I was at, I'm not going to mention the bank, but they were offering a 5% CD rate for two months. I think one for two months and one for nine months, but the 11 months, the 14 months, they're just very, very odd, odd numbers.
Yeah, yeah, drops right down. So they're only wanting your money for short term.
Thanks for your diligence into your team.
You're very welcome, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you. Dispatch E-911 request Director Vance.
Good morning. I bring in a, a motion before you to bring to a full session, full meeting in two weeks. So the uninterrupted power system for central dispatch is essentially the extra large battery pack that is the safety line between us losing commercial power and the generator kicking up. And it was originally installed in 2007 and we were notified it was end of life as well. I could pay about $10,000 to keep it going another year. I did speak directly with the service company and they are not confident that it would sustain unaddressed until next year to buy it. That being said, I did receive a quote. I believe I provided you a copy. The quote itself is $32,177. I need to talk with IT Director Andy, see what his plans are for that UPS. They were installed at the same time. Maybe there is some sort of discount, what have you. So I would like to replace it outright instead of spending $10,000 this year and another $33,000 next year. And that's what my purchase is for. Yes, sir.
Is this anything that we've been budgeting for, Jody?
This is in his capital projects, money that he has set aside. Yes.
I am working on a, a report for you to explain some of those things. But yes, 911 is self-funded through a village and state surcharge. But it doesn't come out of the general fund.
A big believer in uninterruptible power supplies. You gotta have them.
And the, the day of the authority board meeting, there was an issue with the generator that, I think it was two days, so we would have really been up a crack, so.
Yeah, we didn't know if we were going to be in business or not.
I actually, we had set up the backup center over at the EOC as a contingency. That's how, that's how much of a nail biter it was for a couple of days. So this, this is important, but also starting to think about other capital for the county building, like generator updates and things like that is important.
How much, how much does it run? How much? Does it take care of, I guess, what, what?
The UPS or the generator?
Yeah.
The UPS?
It isn't hooked into the whole building and run everything?
Nope, nope. The, the UPS is strictly for central dispatch. It keeps all our workstations, our radios, our CAD computers and our telephones. So we would be able to operate approximately a brand-new unit up to two hours depending. Doesn't operate the lights. The generator itself covers all of dispatch as well as most of the courthouse, I believe.
Rooftop units, all the emergency.
That's, that's the separation between dispatch and the courthouse is they have the UPS units at each desk. We have the one big one in the back room.
Any other questions?
It's an authority board meeting. We did approve it.
Yes, yeah.
Too far to move on to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
GIS and Land Division Services. Equalization Director Jamie and Jody Valentino.
Good morning, honorable members of the Board of Commission, Roscommon County. I am Jamie Hauserman, your Equalization Director, also sitting with me as your county controller. So I guess I want to start maybe with a little bit of a history, a brief history. A handful of years ago, we had an equalization clerk full-time. She did the majority of the work for land division applications for each of the townships. From that, we then charged a fee to the townships for that service. So it in essence washed out probably her, her role in that process as far as financially. She was being funded by the townships for her portion. She would collect the data throughout the year and then she would analyze it, work with the surveyors if there were discrepancies in surveys, work with the taxpayers to ensure that the deeds came in and that the deeds matched up with the surveys. And then we would do that process of doing land divisions. A couple of years ago, she retired. And since then, it has been a little bit interesting in that at the same time, your, your IT department also did then the mapping changes. So, so there's the paper changes. That's what, that's what the equalization clerk did. The IT and mapping person did the changes in the map, made the lines where the lines then needed to be for simplicity. Both of those people retired. At that point, we went with a full-time GIS person, created a GIS department. That costs you approximately $60,000 a year between wage and benefits. I would say that was pretty compatible at that time with what those two positions probably cost you separately. Since then, your GIS person has resigned and your budget has been cut to the point where, I want to say it's in the neighborhood of like $40,000-ish now in the budget. And it's, it's not very feasible to hire a GIS professional at that type of wage. So we are battling against two issues. One, do you hire a GIS professional, increase the budget and make that a whole position again? Or do you come up with something different? And so, and Jody and I have been working diligently on the, is there a potential for something?
Roscommon.
Like, as you've seen from me in my office in the past, we've substantially cut budgets every time we had the opportunity in an effort to maintain some level of quality and continue with the program at a, at a lower cost. In doing that, I contacted the person that retired and said, hey, retiree, would you be willing to come back out of retirement to assist us this year in just getting some of this work done? She did that. Her total fees ended up being approximately $5,000. On top of that, the, the other, the other clerk that works in my office, your deputy equalization director, also did some substantial work. She did that as another duty is assigned at no cost, probably was not fair to her. But she organized all of this work. Then your retiree came in, did the work. I would say she probably had $5,000 of unpaid labor into that process. So then that puts us, if we were to pay those positions at about $10,000. But then there's still that piece of how do you move the lines in the map? And so big discussions with that. We've talked to multiple GIS companies. And we ended up contacting the GIS company that also works with our 911 dispatch center. They already do work with us. They're willing to, for this year, do the lines in the map for less than $5,000. So you've got about a $15,000 total package with, with getting everything done that needs to be done. But I should say that in also in that conversation, I, I went back to this IT idea because the reality is when you have an in-house person, you also have the ability to do special projects. When you hire a company, you're buying a product and there's no ability for special projects. So some of those things I was thinking about was there was a lost child. Earlier in 2023, our GIS person was able to come in, help the Sheriff's Department make maps, get, get to the location to help this, this child. There, there are also projects that are way more simplistic than that. Maybe a township zoning official would like a new township zoning map. In your SAD conversations, your SIDs, that would be at some point, you're going to want mapping probably that shows that. Those are those types of projects that then would be gone. And so while I'm a huge saver of money and we could probably do this always for in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $12,000, I do believe that there is that spot where it says, you know, we probably should maintain some level of ability to help and do these projects. All of them come at a cost. We don't do them for free. So whomever hires us to do those projects, they're the one paying that anyway.
So I should add that the second part of IT or the third part of IT is the online map that you got when you go on and you say search online map. That would be, that would be something then we would still be able to maintain through IT. Otherwise, that's non-existent.
Right.
And everybody loves that.
Yeah, we do love that mapping. We've looked at some alternatives. Some of those companies that we could hire would do, would host a mapping product, but it would be on a different platform. So you can't really go to Roscommon County. I mean, you'd hit a link, but then, but then it doesn't fit with our data. So right now you have data and map together. We could separate that at some point, but there's, I don't really see a need for that, I guess, is my thought in that our proposal is do we go with these pieces in a total of about $15,000? Or do we hire a GIS professional and you guys give us another $50,000 on top of what we have? Or, or do we some, do we something else? And so my recommendation would be that we go with these three pieces and try to see if we can't get that to work well with the idea or intent of at some point, working ourselves back to the spot where our IT department did the mapping piece of it. We did have, you know, ample staff that, that could take care of that. My retiree has offered to come back again next year if we want to continue down this road. So that's a possibility. She was a young retiree, so I could see that going on for a long time.
She's going to love that.
She would love it. Yeah. So anyway, so that's, that's what we have for you. Do you guys have questions for us?
Okay, so right now we're doing, first of all, how are we budgeted for it?
Budget in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $45,000 for a part-time GIS person that does not exist. The position's vacant.
If we hired a full-time person, well, first of all, you've got subcontractors. And say, for example, down the road, we don't need the subcontractor. There's no problems. But if we hire somebody permanently, we got to keep them working, creating benefits, all that stuff. And that affects our budgetary processes opposed to just having the money there to do projects as they are needed. I know sometimes you pick up efficiency having a full-time employee, but then what happens down the road when those particular services aren't needed? I mean, is that, that's something I think we all really need to look at.
Our luck of the draw from the board is this is a position you probably would have laid off to, to pass your budget anyhow. So the timing worked out where this person decided they wanted to pursue a career that their degree was really in. We lost a great employee, but at the same time, it's left us in a, in a juncture. So we budgeted less, less for 2024, not really knowing what the solution is. I will tell you right now that this three-tiered approach that Jamie has, has approached me with, you'd have this seasonal employee who probably would be closer to $6,000 next year because there were some things that had been done in 2023 prior to the GIS specialist leaving. You would then have a contract with Coleman Engineering, which is currently does services for our 911 of roughly 3,500 based on their quote for parcel splits, combinations, parcel boundary revisions, and then general GIS map maintenance for, for that end. So basically still supporting what we have. And then you'd be looking at probably $5,000 for IT, but we would be doing that on a different, kind of an hourly, we'd have to pay per hour. So this would be something we'd have to sit down at the end of the year and say, is this still feasible? We'll have to watch that cost. So we'd be looking at roughly $15,000 versus the 40 we budgeted for doing this.
And that'd be also with paying my deputy a little bit of extra hours at her normal rate to collect this data, which this year, like I said, she did at no cost, which was not ideal.
Marchant de Greatness, you have my unwavering support.
Thank you. As you have seen in my office in the last 10-plus years I've been here, every single time I get the opportunity to reduce our budget, I do that.
10 years now, huh?
Done a good job.
I know. Yeah, I started with six full-time people and a typewriter that I had to take away from them and they were not impressed. I told them that this is not the most economic way to do things. I also had to take their fax machine away from them. You need to scan an email. Yeah, we've come a long way, but, and we've reduced my budget by more than, by more than half.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Village update discussion of the whole. The updates that I can give you currently is that approximately 3,400 postcards were mailed out, I think Tuesday?
Yes.
On Tuesday. On Tuesday. And there's about oh, three thousand flyers that will be going out this week in the Holt Lake Resort for the millage. Um. It's our job as commissioners to get the word out there and to educate the people about what the millage is for. We only have a short time before this election takes place. Um I would like to make sure that all commissioners are on board because if we're not on board, how can we expect the rest of the county to get on board? Any questions? Comments?
Sounds good to me.
That being said, we will adjourn until ten o'clock. Meeting for January twenty-fourth at ten oh one A M. Commissioner Astergren, would you like to lead?
Yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unashamed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attorney clerk, would you please call all of the board members?
Censor.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Astergren.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Are there any deletions or additions to the agenda before we approve it?
Yes. Motion to approve the security.
Okay. So we will add motion number five to approve the Roscommon County Municipal Building Court's security policy. And I would also like to add one item under unfinished business, Eric DeRoche, um regarding the airport motion.
Second. Oh.
The motion?
We have a motion.
I thought Rex made the motion.
No.
He was just asking to have something added.
I'll second it. Okay.
Discussion?
I didn't take speed writing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The computer would be fast.
Okay. Uh Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Astergren.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approval of the agenda.
That's what we voted.
Oh, well, I didn't see that part of it with those changes, sorry. Approval of the minutes for January second, twenty twenty-four, the organizational meeting and January tenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting and January tenth, twenty twenty-four lake level control structure meeting.
So move as presented.
Discussion? Oh, please.
Astergren.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes. Yes.
Public comment. Is there any public comment?
Morning. I'm Julie Darden. I'm the district director for Michigan State University Extension, um serving uh Roscommon County um among along with six others. Um wanted to uh make a request uh first that uh you I appreciate the fact that you're adding the building security as part of the meeting. I hope that you're able to spend some time really uh explaining what that means for our for the employees in the building um and feeling. I did get an email in December and subsequent emails uh informing me about the fact that the decision had not been finalized, and I understand you're moving forward to finalize that decision today. It will be helpful, even though it may seem elementary, to really review that. Um and I will make sure that the decision of the board is really clear to the employees that I supervise here in in the building. Um secondly, I wanted to take the opportunity to share um a series of educational opportunities directly related to local government uh from Michigan State University and our state and local government team. Um and I'll be sharing this via email, but uh there is an upcoming series of uh of educational opportunities called the Governing Essentials Series. And you're aware that we do uh uh new county commissioner training uh following the election of of commissioners. That that is being revised and planned for the end of twenty twenty-four following the November election. But these upcoming Governate Governing Essentials Series are an opportunity for local officials to learn about issues and laws related specifically to carrying forward the work of government. Um the the topics include the Open Meetings Act, uh Introduction to Parliamentary Procedure, Components of Extraordinary Governance. Um and so the opportunity is for uh an individual to sign up for the course, twenty dollars per course, or if you sign up for this series of three, it's fifty dollars per person. Um and I will, like I said, I will be making sure that I share those. Um they're going to be delivered via webinar so that uh officials from around the state can take advantage of that. Um and certainly, uh if someone should miss that, if you're signed up and you've paid, um a link will be provided with the recording and the recorded information. Um and please let me know if you have any questions about what that comprises, and thank you so much for your time.
Yes, Julie.
Thank you. There's somebody on Zoom.
Greg C Mac.
Can I talk?
Ready, Mr. C Mac?
Yes, thank you. Um I had a couple of questions. Uh I think sometime today you're going to be going over your new rules, your board rules. And I had a couple of things that I was concerned about, and I wondered if maybe you're talking about this later for your motion, if uh you could just have some board discussion so that everyone would be aware of why. But one of them is that its special meetings only require an eighteen-hour notice, and that seemed to be pretty tight to me, like it might be difficult for everyone to attend, or at least for the public to know about it. And uh so I was just hoping you could talk about that. And secondly, um I thought that there was some discussion too about the rule of uh of no motions being made unless they were brought up two weeks prior in a work session. And I thought some of that discussion centered around that there might be some time-sensitive things that everyone would agree could be passed. So um anyway, uh that's all I had. I just wanted some board discussion so that those explanations could be given. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Administrator Controller Report. Everyone should have received my report. Um a couple of quick lawsuit updates. We are in the initial discovery phase for Chill versus Roscommon County um with the final discovery by May of twenty twenty-four. Uh thank you to Michelle's office. We are also with the opiate suit. Um the group of attorneys are currently pursuing on behalf of the municipalities claims against Rite Aid, um and they have recently filed bankruptcy. Things like Special Assessment District, we are receiving cross-appellant briefs submitted to the Court of Appeals. Um these are mainly restating and agreeing with the arguments of the H L P O A as submitted on behalf of attorney Ellison. Um additionally, we just received word that um we were granted um leave to extend our response to these briefs until their timeline has come up to send those in, so we can issue one response versus multiple responses, thus saving the county money. Um really no new legislative updates. Uh they just came back into session and are kind of figuring out what um what everybody wants and where where things need to move forward with. Commissioner, sorry, Chairperson Censor, um attended with me, thank you, a M M R M A of pre-renewal meeting. Um we did it virtually. Normally, they come in person, but it was bad roads, so I said virtual's great. Um so basically, that's where they go over everything we currently have for our um in liability insurances, um automobile coverage, those types of things. We review the loss history, um which is actually pretty good with the exception of one large open lawsuit from two thousand eighteen. Um we do review of the basic coverage, if there's any recent changes um in the last year for the county as far as sold buildings, bought buildings, changes like that, which of course there have not been, so that made it easier. Um one of the most important things for this board is that as you do move forward with your special assessment districts and any projects that may come, um we want to make sure that included in your quotes, and I will share this with Chase as well, is that we receive a engineering assessment um of replacement costs. That is uh needed. It's quite expensive to the tune of like a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars per control structure, um and would be a lot less expensive to include it in one of one of the repairs and or replacements as they move forward. Um we are only eligible without that for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per lake level control structure. Um so that's important for you to know as we move forward with those types of those types of quotes and bids that you'll deal. Um I did have a meeting with Tim from Ogama County in regards to the potential for regional partnership um in regards to jail inmates. I keep calling this kicking tires because it hasn't seemed real serious yet. Um so we'll just wait and see again with with Ogama County um where they go from there. So I did attend to a virtual Michigan Association of County Administrative Officers meeting. We have those once a month. I'm not always able to make them because they tend to be on days when we're super busy. Um we, while we're there now, um so we have instituted on request of our treasurer uh a banking practice called Positive Pay. Positive Pay is essentially um where we download all of our checks and then it gives you that extra secure method of making sure that you're preventing against fraud or fraudulent amounts as they go through. Um unfortunately, that has caused us a small problem with the check runs from the thirty days prior to instituting Positive Pay, um where checks are being denied because they weren't in Positive Pay, even though we didn't start Positive Pay till this week. So we are working on that uh right now, so we will figure out the best way to to handle that. So um we are beginning preparations for the twenty twenty-three audit, um which includes basically I go through and review every single general ledger transaction from twenty twenty-three from the existing year for the audit. Um we are also in the process, Bill is, of replacing the uh fire panel within the jail garage. It's about fifty-nine hundred dollars. That was due to a failure of the existing panel. Um our current panel has not been managed manufactured for over twenty years. Therefore, it's not fixable, um and it's no longer serviceable at all. This was not an item that was budgeted, um as we had no idea that this would go like this. Um our emergency management director is actually working to finalize an employee notification system through Code Red. Um this is going to be utilized to communicate emergencies and emergency closures to all of the county employees, elected officials, et cetera. Um I have provided communication and direction to the departments regarding the floating holiday as approved by the Board of Commissioners. Um I think it was very well received. Um just needed some some quick understanding of that. Um I will also, kind of a follow-up to M S U E, I will also, um if the board so approves the policy today for building security, send out a bill at point this afternoon explaining to everybody um exactly what the change means for them and is asking the department heads to do a sign-up sheet that everybody has been made aware of it so that we will have that taken care of. Um and again, I will thank Michelle's office for for helping with the scanning of all of those discovery items for me. Um that's it.
Ask questions? Yes, I I read through this the other day, and I didn't quite understand it. I still don't quite understand it, but the discussion of obtaining an engineering assessment if and when new L L Cs are built to insure fully versus current eligible two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What does that mean? And does that mean for everyone else? I I I don't understand.
So I actually um did just explain that, but I'll I'll try that again. Um so essentially what it means is you can only insure the lake level control structure for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
You can only insure it for that? Oh, this is for our li- liability insurance for?
Correct. So if there were to be a failure or somebody were to drive their boat into it and take it out, we are only insured up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we want more, then we have to have this fancy engineering assessment cost analysis um that of course costs almost as much as we're currently insured for in order to do that. So if you move forward with your special assessment district projects, um that would be a great time to include that, in my opinion, to make sure that we can then get a full insurability for those structures.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chair.
Yes.
I don't know if Eric understood that. I don't believe this is liability insurance. This is insurance on the structure.
Structure itself, yeah, not liability.
Okay.
To the structure.
Everybody's received um your correspondences in your package, the M S U extension, um January twenty twenty-four report to the partners and the Michigan Association of Counties, January twelfth, twenty twenty-four legislative updates. Are there any questions or discussion regarding those? We also got our department reports, the Animal Control and Animal Shelter, December twenty twenty-three stats, and the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health, this full year twenty twenty-two annual report. Are there any questions or discussion on these reports? Do we have any visitors? Unfinished business, Eric Girash regarding the airport motion.
That'll be his first.
Thanks, Eric. Didn't I didn't pack a lunch?
So Eric's always a problem, aren't they? Eric's. I understand that there's going to be a resolution for the upcoming.
Yes, I see the pages are, it goes from number, are we missing some number one to four to?
Stay with me. Stay with me. Um so if you look at the first pages, okay, this th- this is a few pages of the sponsor contract, okay, four pages of fifty-nine.
Thank you.
And if you'd like, I can email you the entire contract for your reading pleasure.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, but these are the important ones here, okay? So thi- this is the first page here, kind of describes the project, okay? The second page is a breakdown of the cost. Third page would be the signature page for Commissioner Censor. Well, once you sign it, then we would return it to M dot, and then the director of M dot Aeronautics, uh Director Trout, Mike Trout, would sign it. And then the contract would be executed at that time. Exhibit A is really more of a breakdown. Um it's the same numbers, it's uh more detailed as far as the breakdown where our share for that is two thousand dollars of the forty thousand or five percent. Okay, so this is, this is for the design phase of the runway lighting rehab project. Okay? Any questions there? Okay, I think uh the commissioner here last time was asking about the cost for the construction of the runway rehab lighting project, the construction. And so the second page I I gave you is the probable cost. It's an estimate only. You won't know until project is closed out what the final numbers are. But if you look at the numbers there, the total is five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But if you look at the numbers there, the total is five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Federal share is five hundred and twenty-two thousand. State share is twenty-nine thousand. And the county share or the sponsor share is twenty-nine thousand or five percent of the five hundred and eighty thousand. I can give you all the detail you care to have. If you want to see pieces and parts as part of this.
Helps answer my question a lot from the last meeting. We're leveraging five hundred and eighty with twenty-nine thousand.
Correct. Okay. And one more thing I'd just like to talk about here. If you remember from the last meeting, I explained to you all that. We are on the National Plan of Integrated Airport System. And we received, if, when we're on that system, we receive. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars of non-primary entitlement money every year for the airport for capital improvement. Non-primary means we are not a primary airport is what that means, or an air carrier. Okay, so we get a hundred and fifty thousand. Two years ago, the FAA through the United States Department of Transportation passed a law. It's called B I L bipartisan infrastructure law. And the FAA is investing twenty-five billion dollars. Into our airports throughout the country. We get a piece of that. The county gets a piece of that in addition to our NPE of a hundred and fifty thousand a year. It's not anywhere in there. But the bill money that's coming or has been allocated already is a hundred and fifty thousand for fiscal year twenty-two. A hundred and forty-five thousand for fiscal year twenty-three. A hundred and forty-four thousand for fiscal year twenty-four. And then we should be receiving another allocation of a hundred and forty-five thousand and a hundred and forty-five thousand for fiscal years twenty-five and twenty-six. That money is already allocated in our ten-year plan. Okay, it's already there, already allocated for really two projects. Remember, we could roll this over for three years. Okay, if we do not spend this money, they will pull it and give it to somebody else. Okay, but the two projects that, that most of this money is allocated toward are tea hangers. And a fuel farm. Okay, right now we have about thirty tea hangers. It's a, it's a building where a person rests and keeps their airplane inside. We have full tea hangers and, and have had full tea hangers for a long time now. And I have a waiting list of about eleven people waiting for a tea hanger. So I talk about this at our committee meeting every time. It's old news. But most airports are facing the same problem. They don't have enough hangar space for, for people needing space to store their airplane. So. These are two projects that are very good for our airport. They are revenue generating projects, revenue generating. Okay, so there's an investment and then there's a return. Okay? Whenever we can have a revenue generating, revenue generating project at our airport, it's a good thing. Okay, so that bill money has been allocated for those two, for those two projects that are some years out yet. Okay? That's all I have for you. Yes?
Charge for hangar rental and can we charge more?
Okay, good question. We just increased it January first of last year. We charge a hundred and seventy a month for, for a, one, one style of tea hanger and a hundred and fif- a hundred and fifty a month for the other style.
Is that market? Mark says it's lower.
Well, it, it.
We're very competitive.
We, we are competitive.
If you got a lot of people in waiting line, that's competitive.
Yeah, but we moved the price up. We, we have increased the price.
It's important for us to stay competitive. Mr. Girash is able to keep the hangar full. So they're always full. Try to keep them full. We better have them lower in track.
I, I, I wouldn't say it's low. What I would say is that we're competitive in the geographic region. Okay?
Okay, but we, do we have people on the waiting list?
Yes.
Yes. So would they be willing to pay more? That's, that, that's all I'm asking is to, we're getting revenue, but are we getting enough revenue?
I, I, I'm very loyal to our tenants and they are very loyal to us. And I'm not going to kick someone out to bring someone else in so they can pay more money. I would. I won't.
See, Dave and I sit on the committee. We've had this discussion before. Loyalty is an important and integral part of aircraft. I'm very, very happy that we keep our anger rates where they're at and I think it's better to keep them full and keep loyalty understood than.
We need to build more T Aers. That, that really is the answer.
We, we're very competitive with the bottom line. I don't want to kick people out. Man, I appreciate you.
I understand what you're saying.
That's not my business instinct.
I, I understand what you're saying and, and, and I.
If we had.
It's starting to go back and forth and we can't have that.
We'll keep it where it is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just want to add one thing. They also purchase fuel from us.
Purchase fuel and, and they. Yeah, they support the airport.
Thank you.
In, in a number of ways, okay? Thank you.
New business. We didn't have anything listed. We're on to motions and resolutions. Clark, whenever you are ready.
Move to approve two thousand twenty-four Board of Commissioners Board Rules as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I just want to talk about the one thing Darlene, you and I were talking about. I mean, just, just so I'm clear on it and so everybody else is clear on it.
What page that was?
Page nine. Because when we're in work sessions, we're not making motions and you had explained to me that. We need at least two board members to be in agreement to move it forward for the agenda. So can you just explain exactly how that's going to happen?
My feeling on it was like when I was telling you is that when I asked, when we're in a work session and somebody who says that they want to bring something up like I did the last. And I'm asking. The commissioners are, is there any discussion? Is there any problems with doing so? That would be the time to object to it. Basically.
Okay.
And if nobody's objecting, then it's on the assumption that everybody or is ready to be able to do that for all in agreement.
That's what I understood too. Just wanted to make sure so the audience and the rest of board members understand the same thing. Thank you.
I believe, yes.
It's always important that we don't have those aha moments. That we make sure that all the motions that are brought forward is to give the chairman and the vice admiral opportunity to be able to vet them, to make sure they're appropriate. Something that, that remain to the, the public. It's, and I know Mr. C Mac brought up the eighteen hours. That, that is standard, standard law. At the same time, I can't think of any time Jody and Dave helped me out here. That we've ever even come, usually we give a day or two notice. We don't try to, we don't try to push something through without being transparent. I think we've always been very fair and reasonable to make, to ensure that we always are. Public informed. So I, I appreciate his concern because eighteen hours doesn't seem like very much time. It's an open meetings act, but we've, we've always tried to be very transparent. So we've never tried to push something through. It hasn't been vetted to the public at least beforehand unless it's an emergency. So I appreciate Mr. C Mac's comment, but we've always tried to be very transparent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was gonna, I was gonna actually make those same comments in our board comments. It's a statute. It's a statutory issue. And eighteen hours, although, you know, it's al- always nice to try to get agreement with, that all the board members can be there. So we don't have those. Ah, jam them through moments. For example, I'm going to be gone the next ten, fifteen days. And I won't be available till the next meeting. So hopefully you guys aren't going to have any wild, crazy meetings.
Nobody down here has time for that.
I do want to make mention that our clerk had some suggestions with some wording. So when I handed out the board rules. Anything that was highlighted and in red, those were the suggested areas that were changed from the last version. And it's just really the minor wording. On that. Do I have a motion to approve the board rules? Oh. Oh, ready to vote then. Sorry.
This is new stuff, Darlene.
It is new stuff.
Astegren.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number two, move to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash zero one dash zero two, Blodgett Memorial Airport Engineering Design of Runway Lights. Blodgett Memorial Airport Engineering Design of Runway Lights. Whereas the Roscommon County Blodgett Memorial Airport has been approved for a block grant contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT. For the purpose of contracting with a consultant for engineering design of runway lighting. And whereas the total proposed design project costs are estimated at forty thousand dollars, of which the county of Roscommon is liable for five percent, not to exceed two thousand dollars. And whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners believes that the proposed engineering design project is fully supportive of the community's growth and development. And whereas the board does fully authorize chairperson Darlene Censor to sign on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. The contract as proposed by the Michigan Department of Transportation for the purpose of contracting with a consultant for engineering design of runway lighting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners fully authorizes and supports the acceptance. Of the MDOT contract for federal, state, local airport project under the block grant program as described above.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is getting us into spending money that we do not have in the budget. And even if there was, it's not all free money. For our costs down the line, county will incur to fulfill this contract. I thought it was going to be twenty-seven thousand. We're going to have into it probably by the time we're done with this, but with the new information, it looks like twenty-nine thousand. We have made a commitment to our employees for compensation and I don't see how this is in line with that. That's my opinion.
Any other discussion? Yes.
I was mentioning earlier, I'll get back to that because it got cut off. I think we really need to consider, even though we've got the loyalty aspect of having our current customers there, for the most part, anyone that owns an airplane. Not saying they're rich. But anybody that has an airplane. Shouldn't be subsidized by the taxpayers. I think we really need to look into, even though we had an increase, everything is increasing dramatically. And I think we really need to look into what we're charging. For the airplanes in the hangers and possibly. Charging more, get more in line with market, Chair, if. We need to find out if it is really an actual market, uh, market price. So I think we need to look at that. I'll, I'm going to vote for this, but I think we really need to look at, at, at what we're charging for hangar prices, even though the loyalty aspect and everything, and I understand what Mark is saying about that. Thank you.
And I'll stay with the leadership of Eric Girash. I think he's fair and reasonable and he's, he has a figure of the pulse of the public. I know him and Keith work together and I think that we should stay with, with, with what we have right now. Obviously, it's probably a wise move to, we can look at the budget. Maybe a fresh look, but right now my, my, my opinion is I stay with, I'll lockstep with Eric in regard to the prices that he's charging right now. Thank you.
Do we set the price or, or is it set by the airport?
And, and.
Yes.
Even I sit on the committee.
Okay.
I think it's fair and reasonable what we're charging right now. But again, I'll ask Eric to look at it down, which is next meeting is March.
Yeah, that's all I ask. That's all I ask.
Um. No, I have a comment, discussion, discussion comment. So the two thousand, I just want to make sure, Jody, the two thousand is already in his budget, correct?
That is correct. That is in the twenty twenty-four budget, the two thousand is. Okay.
All right. So any other discussion? Call call?
Astegren.
Yes.
Wolfson.
No.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Number three, move to approve a letter of understanding between Roscommon County and the nine-one-one Police Officers Association of Michigan. Authorizing a shift in responsibility of maintenance of the overtime list from nine-one-one Police Officers Association of Michigan to nine-one-one Administration.
Back it. Discussion? Call call?
Russo.
Yes.
Astegren.
Yes. Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number four, move to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash zero one dash zero three, county election to audit principal residence exemptions. Whereas the General Property Tax Act, Public Act two oh six of eighteen ninety-three allows for counties to elect the option of auditing principal residence exemptions within its properties. And whereas Roscommon County Treasurer Rebecca Reagan has expressed an interest in retaining the current status. Principal Residence Exemption Audits being completed by the county treasurer's office. And whereas the Board of Commissioners has been satisfactory, has seen satisfactory results from the previous five years of principal, principal residence exemption audits. As conducted within the county treasurer's office and wishes to maintain this service for the townships. And whereas the state of Michigan Department of Treasury requires that Form four zero six three be signed and submitted by the county treasurer. Or county equalization director with the concurrence by resolution of the county board of commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners authorized Treasurer Rebecca Reagan on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the county of Roscommon. To elect to audit principal residence exemptions under the provisions of the General Property Tax Act, Public Act two oh six of eighteen ninety-three as amended.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Discussion?
Who are you giving the motion to? You had two people do it.
Mark down for the second.
The second. Question? Yes.
I would just like to say LaRonde is doing a great job. She's, that's a prudent track record of what she's doing in that office. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call call?
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Astegren.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Number five, move to approve the Roscommon County Sheriff's Office Policy Procedure J dash three effective January twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
So move.
Second. Discussion? So with this policy, I am going to urge all commissioners that during normal operating hours to use the security entrance. Just like every other employee and member of our community. Will have after hour access like we need, but during normal hours, I would urge you to use the actual security entrance.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There was an article this week in the paper about compromise and I appreciate the leadership of the chair offering that as a compromise. And I appreciate the leadership of the Chair offering that as a compromise. Therefore, I can vote for this because during normal business hours, commissioners will use the entrance and exit through the security entrance. Based on that compromise, I appreciate your leadership, Madam Chair, and I can vote for this.
Likewise.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Yes, I do have one I saw. So that means regularly, we're going to be parking out here and coming in through the security entrance from now on, instead of in the employee parking lot.
Yeah.
We're going to park over there.
We, we.
Yes.
This discussion for years. Commissioners should park over here. They should park the farthest away. We should not be parking out front. This is, this is, this is Mark Milburn speaking. I always park far away because I'm not going to take a spot from an employee or a person who's going to do business here at the company. My opinion, I will always park across the street and walk because that's, that's what I should do. And take, if somebody's disabled or an older person, I shouldn't take a spot from them. That's me speaking. That's my background.
Okay, I'll be willing to compromise and park in the furthermost part of the parking lot because that's never, that's never used.
What you want, but I'm always going to park far away.
So before you guys vote, and I just keep this in mind, liability, if you walk from that parking lot to there, like on a day like today, I really don't want to have to call nine one one for somebody that slips and fall for that. So I appreciate you parking in the far back on the other side versus this one. The other thought process for that is, we will limit when we maintain this parking lot after Monday across the way because that will offset the cost of having additional security on. We will not need to maintain it at a daily salt or dirt in order to use that because that is a county parking lot or county employee parking. So that will not be something, and I will communicate to the village. So if they still wish to do something different to utilize it, they can as well.
I have another question. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Will we be able to exit that door?
No.
Won't be able to exit, we'll have to still go out that door. Okay, I was going to say it'd be, I'd park there if we could exit that door.
Yes.
And I can't speak for anybody else. That's just what I'm going to do. But at the same time, Jody, if the parking lot over there isn't available, then I'll park far away. I will always park far away from the building. Thank you for the compromise, Madam Chair. I appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
What's the effective date on this?
Monday. January twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Any other discussion?
And I want, yeah, I want to thank the Chair for all the work that he did on this because I know this took an enormous amount of work in getting this done. So I really appreciate it.
I just need those. Pretty committee.
Okay. Be sure to tell the judge I appreciated the work he did on it.
Roll call, please.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Astegren.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Committee reports. Commissioner Astegren?
Okay. Got a few things. The lake level issues right now. Higgins is above the maximum winter drawdown at four point eight seven gauge or, I'm sorry, four point seven eight gauge. I have the wrong number in there. I'm sorry. It's four, it's four point eight nine today. I don't know what happened. And which is point two four inches above the maximum winter drawdown. And it is in compliance with the court order. Holton Lake is four point zero eight inches above the maximum winter drawdown or at seven point nine four gauge. And Lake St. Helen is at five point nine nine gauge or three inches above the maximum winter drawdown. Right now, we're working on getting the update on the lake level page done. I was working with Andy in between the meetings and they have those modifications made. So we're going to have, I'm going to go over the final review and hopefully those will get posted on the website pretty quick. Also, I've got a copy of some comments that I'll leave with the clerk, and I just want to read those into the record really quick.
What is this regarding?
Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. The meeting that I attended and addressing the issues that I went over with them there.
Okay. As far as the comments, unless they're actually yours, they don't go into the record?
They are my comments.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll, and I'll leave a copy, a hard copy. And I just want to let everybody know exactly what's going on. If that's everybody's approval. And I, and I told them that I'd like to start in the meeting. I told them I'd like to, because I was able to have comments there. I'd like to have a discussion regarding the enabling agreement and amending it in regards to giving each county commission the option to, and I say option, to delegate its board membership to someone else in place of a commissioner. And we talked about this. This will improve the makeup of the board in a positive way. It will provide greater diversity within the board and improve the dysfunctionality that I've seen there and everyone is experiencing at that time. For example, I was not aware of anyone on the board that has police experience in dealing with mental health issues within our communities. Our primary customer, who are the police. Certainly, one of our biggest consumers is the police and how they interface and use our services is critical. Without their import, input, we are missing a great deal of understanding on how we can improve our services and how we deal with each individual community. In Roscommon, our board would like to have Ben Low, our undersheriff, become a board member as he would be our delegated board member and report to our commission on what was going on. And he would be able to make much better decisions regarding the services at the NLH. I'm not going to go through this whole thing because it is about a five or six minute talk. But I, I received positive comments from some of the board members and negative comments from some of the board members at the NL CMHA. Some of them felt, hey, we just did all this work. Why are we changing it now? Or why would we want to change it? Well, you change things for, and you amend things to have a more positive impact. So hopefully, I'm going to be able to, you know, rally some of the troops there and get that changed. I think it would have a more positive impact on our community to have somebody that understands what's going on in the mental health field. And that'd be, I know Ben isn't here today. I've got a couple of calls into him. Haven't received a response back. I think he's probably tied up somewhere. And hopefully, we'll be able to get these changes made. But I'm going to give these. Let's see, Michelle, you can have them into the record. Thank you.
Commissioner Milburn?
And the COA. And we had Louis Petrowski is, once again, our treasurer. We're supposed to have our CPA there, but unfortunately, he had another business engagement. They turned into the Northwest Community Action Agency and they gave us a bunch of free tax prep and I'll put these on the table and I'll give them to the resorator afterwards. Maybe we can get them put in the paper. We offer some really good housing and energy efficiency services and free tax prep. It's important for our citizens to be aware of that. And another side note moment. This isn't meant to be critical or admonishment. Right? But Eric, if you could just, if you could have given that information to the chairman beforehand, would have been able to, be able to reviewed it. I'm hoping that in the future, we can, chairman should always have that information beforehand. And it's not, I'm not trying to admonish or be critical. If you have it on the unfinished business, it should help me better prepare.
Well, it's part of our committee.
No, again, that's just my thoughts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Russo?
Nine one one Authority Board, and then we have that committee meeting. After a regular board meeting with Oklahoma County. That's it.
I attended an agenda meeting Thursday, January eleventh. Worked with, on our postcards, the village postcards and flyers, attended that telephone meeting and virtual meeting with our controller on MMRMA. And on a side note, at our last meeting, we had mentioned that the public meeting for the Holton Lake Special Assessment Methodology was going to be held February first. It is not. It has been changed to February seventh at six P M. Markey Township Hall. The mailings have gone out, and I just wanted to mention that because the date did change. Mr. Wolfson?
Yes, I attended MSU Zoom meeting. It was pretty much all about how they're funded. One very interesting thing came out was the two thousand eighteen farm bill has been extended to September of two thousand twenty-four, which ensures some funding for them, but it also entails programs for farmers in our area. Thank you.
Public comment. Do we have any public comment? Yes, come up and please state your name and turn on the mic.
Good morning. Cherry McGee, seven one eight four West Emery. I just wanted to update the board. I talked with Stephen Chino, who is the project manager of Consumers Energy. He informed me that about, about April-ish, when they finished their, yep, their their survey of the land or the properties. And they, once they finish that and they find that there is no invasive species, then they will do their property appraisals. And then that's when they will start their process of airing apart Emory. So he, he said that's, that's how the process will work. So it's still in progress. Our committee is still here. We're still fighting it. And I wanted to thank the board for standing with us. We're not going anywhere. So we got until spring. We're working on it still. But that's what he told me. So, so hopefully, we got an endangered species in somewhere on Emory. Back on wood, maybe? I don't know. But. Yeah, a plant or an animal.
Thank you. Yes.
Good morning. I'm Jeffrey Max Lavoy. I'm with the Emory Group, one of nine people. Sherry's one of us. Here to report that Mr. Milburn is going to meet with, I promoted him, I put down congressman on his packet. So he's a representative, Mr., Representative Borton. And he's going to meet with him and give him that packet. That packet consists of everything that I've, we've been giving you guys through the time it does, the resolutions from Roscommon Township, Denton Township, and your resolutions that you've guys have given us. We appreciate that. We ask for, if there's anything more that you can do for us, we would greatly appreciate it. We, again, we are not going to back down. We are fighting. And also, the package got our, you know, the first contracts that came to me, what they wanted, when they wanted to steal my property for two thousand dollars, clear cut my whole front yard and reduce the property value and bring all these SUVs through our, through our properties. And we have no rights, no say. And also, I'd like to say to the public, we are not against consumers' power upgrading their system. We've been getting some backlash saying, we're trying to stop consumers' power for putting this system in so, because they keep losing their electricity. This is not going to affect your electricity. This is for the infrastructure grid for the state of Michigan. If they want to, if they want to help their residents out and people out, like they say they want to, then they need to replace the low voltage that goes down these roads. And a good way to replace, to stop this to happen, instead of being cheap and putting poles up, a gentleman, when I left the meeting one time, mentioned to me, he asked me a question. When we get storms, do you ever lose your natural gas? What's the answer? It is buried. So it's take that hundred million dollars that our state give them and let them bury the low voltage down these roads. And when a storm comes, we won't have trees knocking it down. We won't have ice storms because you do not lose your gas because they are buried. And the high voltage, there is another route to take. They've told us that they can't do that. They can do that. They've been doing that. Just look around. There's all kinds of power lines going down places, through swamps, through everything. They also are out there, they, our government, our state government has given them total intimate domain. That means you guys put the resolution, say you don't want to go down Emory Road, that gives you no power. Consumers Energy owns the state. They, they tell us, taxpayers, the commissioners, the townships, that they can do whatever they want, and our state is giving that power. And I suggest that everyone, everyone, and I want this on record, needs to look into our government and find out, doesn't matter if they're Democrat or Republican, whatever, they need to see what these people are voting for. Because I think a lot of people that voted for this has pocketed some money because Consumers Energy has boughten the Michigan government to have so much power. Here's an incident, they wanted to put some wind generators and some solar panels in property that was rental. Communities voted no. They didn't want it. They, they lost it. They can't do it. Since intimate domain, they, consumers got intimate domain. They are coming in and they are putting it in where they were told not to. That's how much power our government has given private organization. Yes, we need Consumers Energy, but they need us too. They should never, ever have so much power and especially should not be able to take the power away from our people and our communities and our townships and our counties that we represent, that we're supposed to be here to represent. Thank you very much again for all your help. If you can help more, we greatly appreciate it because we are not going to back down. And I don't want our road, our county, and some big corporations telling the American people that they're in charge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Michelle Stevenson, County Clerk. I just wanted to give you a few updates of what's going on. As we're all aware, we do have the February twenty seventh presidential primary election coming up in just under four weeks now. And my office is very busy. And this last week, we spent collaboratively a lot of hours, they were supposed to track it, I'm not sure what that total is, on working on minutes, looking up minutes back to nineteen eighty and copying everything that referenced Higgins Lake, Lake Level and Higgins Lake, Lake Level Control Structure, which put a lot of stress and pressure on our office, especially when we have people out sick and such. So just please keep in mind, I mean, you know, it is what it is. Everybody's got their right to do whatever they need to do, whether it's regards to lawsuits and such. But just remember, your clerks, including your county clerk, your township clerks, this is for everybody. They're going through a lot of stuff right now. We've got the implementation of early voting coming up with this next election. That's going to start on February seventeenth, and that's where voters have nine days of early voting, that they can go in person to their early voting site. Anybody whose early voting site is someplace different than their normal polling location should have received notification prior to this. Reminder too, that this is a presidential primary. So when you go to vote, whether it's by A V or an early voting or in person on election day, you will have to declare which ballot style you want. And it will be either a Democrat ballot, Republican ballot, or proposal only ballot. So voters do have that option. I would remind voters to take a look and see who's dropped out of the races at this point before you go into vote because they seem to be dropping like flies. And, you know, I don't want your vote wasted. And, um, you know, I don't want your vote wasted. And let's see what else. So next week, the next two weeks, I will be doing election inspector certification training. I've got two dates that I am conducting the training at Denton Township. And I have one date I'm going to conduct it here at the county building. This is something that I'm required as the county clerk to do before every election is provide certification for election inspectors. Um, I'm kind of hoping that with the amount that I have coming for this training for this election, that maybe my summer class will be a little bit smaller. Usually, the summer classes are about 150 people. Um, but we do need more election inspectors. Some townships have a shortage of Democrat workers. Some have a shortage of Republican workers. So, um, and I have to give kudos to our township clerks because they've really had to step up over this last couple of months. We've been, you know, waiting for the state to tell us how things are going to operate and function with this early voting, with the legislation that was passed in 2022. And then our legislature, who probably hasn't worked an election a day in their life other than campaigning for them to tell us to make the laws for it. So, um, they've really come together. We have a clerk meeting on Friday that we're going to kind of go over what we can and do whatever preparation we can and try to alleviate a little bit of their stress. And I have a board of canvassers meeting tomorrow, if they're not all sick, to do their annual organizational meeting while they're even numbered organizational meeting and approve a bunch of ballot containers. So that's just the beginning of our 2024. So just, you know, be nice to your clerks. Thanks.
Any other public comment?
Madam Chair?
It's, no.
Yeah, I was wondering, are we going to have?
Board comment? No. In two weeks, we will.
Okay. I'll talk to you about that after the meeting.
With no other public comment, that would be adjournment? All in favor? Aye.